Good evening. Welcome to this evening's council meeting for January 16th, 2017. I am Mayor Ted Schaefer and with me are my council colleagues Paul Albrecht, Rudy Storteboum, Councillor Gail Martin, Councillor Val Vandenberg, and Councillor Nathan Pahal. At the staff table we have Darren Light, our Director of Corporate Services; Paula Cusack, our Deputy Corporate Officer; Francis Chung, our Chief Administrative Officer. At the other table we have Gerald Minchuck, Director of Development Services and Economic Development; Rick Baumhoff, Director of Engineering, Parks and Environment; and Kim Hilton, Director of Recreation, Culture and Community Services. So the first item is adoption of the agenda. Councillor Vandenberg, seconded by Councillor Martin. All those in favor? It's unanimous four. Second item is adoption of the minutes that were held on December 12th, 2016. Need a mover and a seconder, Councillor Storteboum, Councillor Albrecht. All those in favor? It's unanimous four. So the first item into the business is under the Mayor's Report. Our first meeting after this one is January 30th, and then the one after that is February Councillor Storteboum, Metro Vancouver?
Metro Vancouver, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Metro Vancouver Board of Directors has not yet met since our most recent city council meeting. Likewise, our first meeting of the Climate Action Committee meeting is scheduled for this Wednesday at 9:00 AM. However, staff are hereby reminded to report and reply or reapply to the Sustainable Innovation Fund for this year's grant from Metro to support the ongoing project of an urban farm that the City of Langley has in partnership with Quanlan Polytechnic University. Also, please note that Metro Vancouver is updating the Regionwide Water Shortage Response Plan with -- that regulates how residents, businesses, and local governments use drinking water in the summer months and during periods of water shortages. As part of the public engagement process, Metro plans to host a series of sustainability dialogues. Council staff and the public are encouraged to attend and join in these discussions about proposed changes to this important regional plan. The next event is at Surrey City Hall this Thursday at 11:30 in the morning. For more information, please go to the Metro Vancouver website. In closing, please be advised that the first of two council of council meetings is tentatively scheduled for April the 29th this year. Happy birthday. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Storteboum. The engineering update, we have Mr. Rick Baumhoff going to give us an engineering, parks, and environment update.
Okay, thank you very much. So, update for January 2017. As you can well imagine, we've been busy with snow and ice control. Our region experienced uncharacteristic snow and ice in December 2016, and the city's clearing efforts in December included approximately 632 metric tons of salt and 1,200 man-hours of service time. The total amount spent on snow and ice control in December was $179,589. So it's a significant amount. Our budget for the whole year is $154,000. So it was a significant amount of money spent in -- for one month. We're approximately, for the year, we're somewhere around $210,000 for the year. So, snow removal, duties of the property owner. Just wanted to remind, hopefully we'll be -- we're beyond the snow part now and we're into more regular kind of weather for us, but it is the responsibility of property owners in the City of Langley to remove any accumulation of snow or ice from the sidewalk and walkways bordering their property within 24 hours after a snowfall that caused any accumulation of snow or ice sidewalks or walkways or prior to the depth of snow accumulation exceeding 10 centimeters. So approximately four inches that needs to be cleared. And as Councillor Storteboum mentioned, there's a water shortage response plan consultation. Metro is considering updating the water shortage response plan and clarify any potential adjustments, plan objectives, the restrictions, and rationale for moving to one stage of the restrictions to another. The changes will apply in 2018. They are seeking the public's input, and as, again, as Councillor Storteboum mentioned, you can attend a dialogue session in person, or you can provide information to them on their website, and you can link to our website, thecity.langley.vc.ca for a link to the Metro survey. And the deadline for public comment is January 31st, 2017. Some of the changes that they're considering in the regulation is the change to the start date of the restrictions, lawn watering reduced from three mornings per week to two mornings, restricts schoolyard sports fields watering times, restrict watering of flowers, plants, trees by sprinkling in the mornings, commercial car washing only if automatic systems that recirculate water are high-pressure wound facilities. So these are all being considered, and they're seeking input from the public on those issues. In terms of current projects, we are experiencing, again, weather-related delays and the current traffic signal upgrade at 200th and Grade Crescent and 203 Street roadworks and roundabout project. They are now projecting 203 Street will be completed by the end of March of this year. Current projects under design, the Baldy Creek culvert replacements, so it's near 53rd Avenue, that's right near the entrance to the Brydon Lagoon parking lot area, 200th Street Bridge Deck replacement, the 200th Street Grade Crescent 50th Avenue traffic study, that has been distributed now to the township of Langley and the City of Surrey for their comments and feedback to us, and then we will be presenting a summary to council shortly after that. We receive comments. Also designing three traffic signal replacements at Glover and 56th Avenue, Duncan Way and at Eastleigh Crescent, and also the 56th Avenue Utilities Project. Final design revisions and tender preparation are underway now, and we plan to tender out in February. And that's it for my report. Thank you.
Questions at all? Hi. Oh, Councillor Pahal?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment about the snow removal. I think it's a great effort compared to some of the stories I heard in personal experience and travel to and from Vancouver for work. It was always nice to come back to Langley City and know that the roads were, you know, plowed. So congratulations, the staff did an amazing job, and I think compared to other municipalities, we really shine. Thank you.
Yes, I'd just like to add my comments to Councillor Pahal's. I know for the City of Langley, we tried to do as close as possible to a black pavement policy, and it's not always perfect out there. I mean, some of the streets were missed a little bit, but I'd just like to say thank you to the staff who spent a lot of long hours, evening hours away from their family. You know, and it, when you think of the two-week period that you're looking forward to, to spending some time with your family, and you're out there cleaning the snow and, you know, the salt and sand on the roadway, you know, it's very hard, even though that staff person does get compensated for it, you're still taking it away from their family. I know, I spoke with Mr. Chung on this, that, you know, we should almost go after ICBC for some of our snow clearing costs, because what we save in the way of injuries by not having the icy streets, as was quite evident in Cloverdale, you know, I skidded right through an intersection, alls I did was just buff up the ice for the guy that was behind me. And, you know, and when you're, you know, going at an extra slow speed, you realize that there are difficulties out there, but, you know, if our pavements are, you know, if you're able to navigate our pavements, you know, what's the reduction to ICBC in the way of injuries, you know, and bodily harm to somebody or whiplash? How long is a person off of work if you have a neck injury because you've been smacked by the guy behind you that couldn't stop the way I couldn't? And, you know, you drive for the conditions, but sometimes they are so shiny, the road and the ice, that you just cannot stop. You know, so there's health, ICBC, there's a lot of factors that, you know, I mean, you know, we were positive on, and again, to the staff, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So, anything else, anything further? Seeing none, thank you for the presentation. Next, we have a recreation update. Kim Hilton, Director of Recreation, Culture and Community Services.
Well, good evening, Mayor and members of council and our viewing audience. Some events that are coming up in the City of Langley. Our first event starting this Thursday, it's a try-it event, and it's really targeted for ages 14 and under, and it's the opportunity for kids to come out and try wheelchair sports. We do request that people register for this, even though it is a freer program, just to ensure that we have sufficient equipment and wheelchairs in the facility. So that's January the 19th at 4:30 PM at Tim's Community Centre. To register, you can phone 604-514-2940. Coming up next month, we have our first or second stat of the year. It's our Family Day celebration, and this year it'll be focused at our new Tim's Community Centre, using multiple rooms within the facility, including the gymnasium. The event will be running from 11:30 AM to 2:30 PM. It is a free event, and if you want to stay tuned to our website to find out details of specifically what activities will be happening, it will be updated as we progress through our planning stages. Our winter recreation guide was delivered back on December 1st, and if you haven't had an opportunity to look through your guide, you can certainly look online at the City of Langley website, or you can pick up a recreation guide at one of our facilities, either Douglas Recreation Centre, Tim's Community Centre, the Langley Library, or several of our nonprofits also have recreation guides in their facilities as well. This is your opportunity to look through all the various opportunities for you and your family of all ages for the winter months, January, February, March, and part of April. So as mentioned earlier in our special event, we will be offering a course in wheelchair sports and activities, and it starts in January. So if you're interested and want to learn how to have some fun and join some of your colleagues that are a little bit more mobile-challenged, please phone 604-514-2940. We're holding our annual open house for our Cookie Monster preschool program, and the open house runs on February the 16th from 5:00 to 6:15 at Douglas Recreation Centre. This is your opportunity to meet our instructor, have a tour of the classroom, and get to understand our programming philosophy for the preschool program. We do have programs that run Monday, Wednesday, Friday, morning or afternoon, as well as Tuesday morning and then a Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday morning and a Tuesday, Thursday afternoon. The program will be running starting September through to June, much like the school year. For more information, you can phone Douglas Recreation Centre at 604-514-2865. Bricks for Kids Winter Fun, this is like Lego. It's a generic type of brick that they use, but they can build anything from sleaze to louge to fire trucks. Come on out and have some fun building with the bricks. Our next program starts on January 25th, and you can phone 604-514-2940 to register. And our preschool programs, we have an active start program. We have two different classes starting. One is for two- and three-year-olds, and we do request parent participation for that program, and then we have four- and five-year-olds as well. This program runs out of Douglas Recreation Centre on Mondays, and our next program starts on January 23rd. Please phone 604-514-2865 to find out more information or to register. Now, this looks interesting, and it's during a council meeting, so we may have to take an hour break and do some foam rolling. If you, does it hurt? I haven't done it. So if you have muscle tension, this is a great opportunity to relax, improve your range of motion, increases blood flow, stimulates lymph system, reduces discomfort caused by tight muscles. So we do have three classes coming up, but the next one is on January the 30th, which is a Monday evening, from 5:30 to 6:30. Now, the rollers are downstairs behind, in the office, and we might just have to try it after work here. So for more information, again, 604-514-2940. Our time program, Together in Movement and Exercise, this is really targeting people who have mobility issues, and really trying to strengthen and improve function and mobility for daily living, including from sitting to standing, walking, stepping on and off curbs, bending and reaching. And it's a fun class, and it really develops friendships and connectivity. Our next program, well, one started today from 2:00 to 3:00 PM, but if you're interested, you can still register at 604-514-2940. Bosu Bootcamp, there's three different days this is running, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. It's high-tensity but low-impact, so if you want to challenge, come on out to this bootcamp. It's a drop-in for 5:50, and we, again, as I mentioned, it's Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays at Tim's Community Centre. And Rise and Spin, very popular class. We are actually having to hand out cards to many of our fitness classes now because we are exceeding our capacity within the classroom. Rise and Spin is one of the classes that are limited due to the number of bikes and the space we have in our spin room, but it's a great opportunity to start your day off with a bit of intense workout and some good stretching. It's drop-in only, and it's at Tim's Community Centre, Monday to Friday. We're offering a babysitter training class for ages 11 to 16. It's running Thursdays from 3:00 to 5:00 out of H.D. Stafford Middle School, and it runs February the 2nd to 23rd. So if you're interested in getting your babysitter certificate and earning some pocket money, and it's good pocket money these days, please phone 604-514-2940 to find out more information and to register. And that's my presentation for this evening.
Any questions? I don't think you're going to catch me on that roller there, but...
It might be good.
Ain't gonna happen. Thank you for the presentation, Kim. The next item we have is bylaws. This is a zoning amendment bylaw, bylaw 2999, and this is for 2018, 02019, 020200, 20210, 20220, 20224, 53A Avenue. This is the final reading, cited as a zoning bylaw in 1996, number 2100, amendment number 131. And I need a mover and a seconder, Councillor Martin, Councillor Pahal. All those in favor? It's unanimous. To go along with this is development permit, that's 05-16, and that is the Development Permit, DP 0516, to be approved to accommodate a four-story, 80-unit condominium building at 2018, 2019, 20200, 20210, 20220, and 20224, 53A Avenue, subject to compliance in the conditions outlined in the Director Development Services Report. Need a mover and a seconder, Councillor Martin, Councillor Albrecht. All those in favor? It's unanimous four. Final reading, this is cited as the chauffeur permit and regulations, this is for the taxis. Final reading of the bylaw cited as the chauffeur permit and regulation, bylaw 2016, number 3002. Need a mover and a seconder, Councillor Albrecht, Councillor Storteboum. All those in favor? It's unanimous four. And this is to go along with the previous one, this is the bylaw 3010, municipal ticket information, final reading of the bylaw cited as the municipal ticket information system, bylaw 2011, number 2846, amendment number 9, bylaw 2016, number 3010. Councillor Pahal, Councillor Vandenberg. All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous four. And the one that everyone's been waiting for, this is the bylaw 3011, the 2017 to 2021 Financial Plan bylaws, this is the first and second reading of the bylaw, cited as the Financial Plan 2010 to 2021, bylaw 2010, or 17, number 3011. Mover and a seconder? Councillor Pahal and Councillor Vandenberg. And, I was going to say, I was going to say councillor, demote you there. We have Darren Light, our Director of Corporate Services, going to give us a overview on what it's all about.
Thank you very much. Mayor Schaefer, members of council, I'd like to take this opportunity to present the 2017 Financial Plan. I'll be focusing on the capital improvement plan, the operating cost drivers, tax rate effects, and next steps. In the capital improvement plan, we have $21.8 million in projects, as you can see here, from different areas within our city. Here are the larger ones, so larger projects are included in this list. Two of these projects, I'll just draw, oh, that didn't come out very well. Two of these projects, I'll just draw your attention to. The top one, the 56th Avenue project, was actually budgeted in 2016. We did receive some additional federal funding for this project, so I'm rebudgeting the whole project to include that federal funding, as well as some additional funding on Penzer Park. I apologize for how that shows up on the screen. So capital projects are funded by a variety of sources, including transfer from reserves. Each year, the city allocates approximately 7% of the tax and utility fees collected towards capital infrastructure renewal. We have gradually been building up this amount, in particular in the water and sewer funds, in order to undertake infrastructure replacement projects. So as pipes and age, they do have to be replaced. This becomes particularly important when large segments of the pipes were installed in the 60s and 70s, and due to our soil conditions, we know that we need to replace them in the coming years. Putting money into reserves will assist the city to address infrastructure renewal in the future. The city has re-implemented the specific half-a-percent infrastructure levy for 2017, which will add $122,500 to the general operating transfer to reserves. The city also receives 10% of the net proceeds from the casino each year. We've estimated that the proceeds will increase by $400,000 to a total of $6.4 million in 2017. Council does allocate some funds to the community grants, including recreation, a new one this year, recreation special events as well. $168,000 is allocated to the Enterprise Fund. This allows city council to address any projects that may arise during the year after the budget has already been approved. However, the majority of casino proceeds are allocated to projects in our capital improvement plan, which was that $21.8 million we talked about earlier. Now, switching the focus to the operating side of the financial plan, in 2017, our financial plan includes $44.4 million in operating expenditures. Over 70% of the operating expenditures are funded through property taxes and utility charges billed at the end of May each year. Based on the results of our recently completed community survey and feedback received from the neighborhood meetings, a number of priority areas were identified, which included public safety, homelessness, the maintenance of Parks, Boulevards, and Trails, infrastructure renewal, and recreation opportunities. City council has heard from the taxpayers, and this financial plan was developed to address those priority areas. Expenditure gap is $883,000, which will require a 3.61% tax revenue increase to close that gap. This includes the half-a-percent infrastructure levy already discussed. This also includes new growth revenues of $235,000. New growth revenues represent new construction that happened in 2016 for buildings like condos or commercial buildings, and that will result in new taxation revenues in 2017. Other cost drivers include, we had some revenue reductions from 2016, tax penalties and interest, and funding received from utility companies like Fortis, B.C. Hydro, Tellus, and Shaw saw a reduction in revenues in 2016. So we've reduced the budget revenues expectations from these sources in 2017 in our financial plan. We do have some revenue increases as well. The B.C. Assessment Authority uncharacteristically increased our tax revenues through the assessment appeal process last year. Usually, our revenues decrease on appeals, but in 2016, they actually increased. Engineering admin fees and building permit fees are increasing based on historical trends. Business license fees are increasing 2%. We have some filming permits that are increasing by $20,000. Parking fines and parking space rentals are increasing based on, again, historical trends. The city began renting a portion of a municipal-owned property, which is beside our Parks Operations Centre, which is now generating an additional $20,815 a year. In 2017, council remuneration policy says that council remuneration will be based on Metro Vancouver's median mayor's salary, so there's a 1.5% increase in the budget for council remuneration in 2017. City staff wages make up about $13 million of our operating budget, which is supported by the property tax revenues of $25.7 million. A provision has been made for the QP, IAFF, and management salary wage increases. It also includes an increase of $124,000 for staff hours to operate and keep clean the newest asset the city has, which is our Tim's Community Centre, which is in line with the recreation opportunities priority that I discussed earlier. I also noted earlier that public safety was a priority in 2017. Policing is our largest department in the city, which is $11.7 million. It's about 45% of the taxation revenues that we collect. It's a big piece of the budget pie. We have 51.35 RCMP members in our contract spring. The city shares with others for the integrated teams based on 75% of the five-year rolling average crime rate, plus 25% on population. Comparatively, the city actually has a fairly high crime rate, and our proportionate share is also high for a city our size for these integrated teams. We share the RCMP contract costs with the township of Langley and, again, use the integrated team formula. So in the current year, we've allowed for 3.3 vacancies. A vacancy is caused when any RCMP member may be on sick leave or parental leave, and this is lowering the vacancy level from three, from six to 3.3. So the actual cost of our RCMP contract is increasing $631,000. Included in that was a 2.5% increase on the RCMP wages and pension benefit costs, and a reduction, as I said, in the vacancy rate. As well, the city does share our municipal employees working in the detachment at the township of Langley. That sharing formula is based on 75% of the number of RCMP officers, which was based on that 75% crime stats and 25% population, and then the other 25% is based on property assessment values between the two municipalities. Focusing still on public safety and homelessness, a new part-time position has been developed to address social issues like homelessness. The community liaison coordinator will work with social agencies, social service agencies, the RCMP and the business community to address critical social issues in the city. This position, on a part-time basis, will oversee the implementation of the homelessness strategic plan and the community crime prevention strategic plan that the city has adopted. In this same category, the city will be increasing our bylaw enforcement resources, and the fire rescue service will be implementing the ECOM emergency radio system to improve inter-jurisdictional communication in our community. Another of the priorities was Parks, Boulevards, and Trails. Significant funding has been allocated to parks and trail improvements in the capital improvement plan I discussed earlier. As well, a new corridor improvement plan will be implemented to enhance maintenance on walkways, boulevards, sidewalks, and medians. Included in our recreation budget is the Fraser Valley Regional Library. The levy is increasing 3.57%, or $44,000. This is allowing for an extra 2% more books and material resources to be purchased for the overall library program. Under utilities, garbage fees are proposed to remain flat for 2017 at $180 for each single-family household. The flat rate for water and sewer funds will be increasing $25, so this is taking it from $50 to $75 a year for each of these utilities. In addition, the sewer rate will be increasing 6 cents per cubic meter, and that's based on water consumption. The city is changing the expense allocation formula between the general fund and the water and sewer utilities. The new formula will be based on 30% of the general government services expenditures, so that the utility funds pay a proportionate share of things like accounting costs, like payroll or accounts payable processing, technology costs, insurance cost, and legislative service costs. So we're... So, we're transferring some of the costs that are currently housed in the general fund to the water and sewer funds, so those funds can operate on a proportional basis. As you've seen, wages make up a significant portion of our budget and are set by the adopted collective agreements, and each year, it's a challenge to find acceptable tax increases to keep the city running. Things like contracted services, supplies, and equipment charge-out rates have been basically static for a number of years, yet purchasing prices do increase for these areas. Doing more with less isn't realistic. Staff don't recommend reducing services or cutting staff, but that is what would have to take place to reduce the budget or overall tax rate increase that I'm going to discuss next. So, what does this all mean? Tonight, we're just talking about the city's portion of the tax bill, which is about sixty-two percent of the overall property tax notice. So, things like school tax, TransLink, Metro Vancouver taxes are also shown on the tax notice, but they're not directly controlled by Langley City Council. Tonight, we're just talking about what council controls. Council has been trying to slowly shift more of the tax burden to our business properties, getting closer to the metro average of ratio for every one dollar spent on residential class, three dollars being on a business class. And in two thousand seventeen, the city of Langley will be at that ratio. Business and light industrial properties are increasing, on average, five point three nine percent. For a strata, which I've shown on the screen here, which makes up sixty-three percent of the residential housing stock, we'll see the total city taxes, which includes taxes and utilities, increasing by three point two percent, or thirty-nine dollars. Comparatively, the single-family homes will see an increase of a hundred and seventy dollars, or five point nine two percent. There is only one rate that city council can apply to all residential properties. So, differentiating between strata units and single-family homes is difficult. The assessed value of single-family homes is climbing about ten percent faster than strata dwellings, causing the differentiation in the actual tax rate effect. So, our single-family homes will be paying approximately three thousand and fifty-one dollars for city services in two thousand seventeen. On a monthly basis, and you can see here the increase relating to taxation, the infrastructure levy, the service level increments that I talked about, and utilities add up to about a hundred and seventy dollars. And that's the increase. On a monthly basis, each single-family home will be paying approximately two hundred and fifty-four dollars, and you can see here how that's split across the departments within the city. Policing being the biggest piece, water and sewer second, and fire the third. So, what are our next steps? The city will be updating the utility rate bylaw at our next council meeting for council's consideration. We'll be hosting a public open house in the foyer in city hall here in front of the finance department on Wednesday, February first, between six o'clock and seven thirty P.M., where staff will be available to answer any questions in an informal setting. And then, on February sixth, at the council meeting, there'll be a committee of the whole, where the public will be invited to share their views about the city's budget, and it's possible to adopt the third reading that night, depending on council's wishes, and the potential final adoption could be as early as February twenty. I'd like to just thank the rest of our department heads and staff, and particularly Mr. Graham Flack, for their efforts in putting together our two thousand seventeen financial plan. And at this time, I'll accept any questions that you may have.
Questions from council? Councillor Storeyboom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Light, for your presentation, very thorough, very understandable, easy to see where these costs are. I'm just curious, in consideration of the significant increase of real estate property values for single detached homes beginning this past year, two thousand sixteen, and then the market cooling and some prices coming down, are we expecting many appeals? Have we got any way of knowing before the end of the month if we're going to be getting some appeals, and if we take it out of the consideration moving forward?
So, we don't receive any of the appeals directly, they go through the B.C. Assessment Authority, so we don't have any knowledge about how many appeals they have. Typically, each year, they'll go through an appeal process, and we'll have an adjustment in the following year of our property taxes, based on whatever the appeal results were. This year, we actually had an increase in our property taxes, based on those appeal process. That was primarily in the business side of the properties, but we don't have any knowledge about how that would play out in the future. What happens is, they take the assessed value of July of last year, but all the properties in the city will be at that basis. So, I think if a person was to be concerned about their particular property as of now, I think the Assessment Authority looks at everything as of July first. They don't adjust things for what's happened between then and now, which would be picked up on the next year's assessment call.
Good to know. Thanks for that information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank you and your staff for doing a great job. It's never easy working on a budget. And a couple of items that really stand out for myself is the nondiscretionary items. Now, there's a, you know, a couple of ones here, the RCMP contract, and those figures come from Ottawa, but that contract alone is six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Another item we have is the fire wage and benefits, that's a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Those are costs that, you know, we can't let go. I mean, those are nondiscretionary. Then, on top of that, you've got an ECOM radio system that we're working with, are partnering municipalities. Then, as if this budget goes forward, we're going to be looking at new bylaw enforcement, which is seventy-nine thousand, almost eighty thousand dollars, and our community liaison person. So, so much has to do with protective services in this community. You know, it's incredible that over nine hundred thousand dollars is new costs in protective services, and that probably is three and a half percent, or three and a quarter percent, just on protective services. And, you know, that, before you even get started, a lot of people say, well, you know, you get some money from the casino, you get some money from elsewhere, but before you even get going, you have these nondiscretionary charges that you have to pay. And, I mean, we could, as you said, we're trying to make the best possible, use our best resources when the RCMP, the way they are, right? And there's always little issues that come up like that, and the little issues turn out to be big funding. And the big funding is something that you and your staff have to try to put together. And with the new assessment rule coming out, and councillor Vandenberg and the rest of this council brought it forward at UBCM, and people don't understand where you have a strata, and then you have a residential. And in the perfect world, they would both go up at the same level, but they're not. So, as staff people, you try to mitigate taxation increases that doesn't overburden one or the other. And we tried at UBCM to have the strata and the condos taken away out of that, the same way light and heavy industry does, or is, some twenty-five or thirty years ago. I can't remember. I was probably around, but I can't remember. But, you know, that's the only fair way that we could start off, is to separate that. And it went to the UBCM, and I spoke with you and Graham earlier, and you've had some inquiries from other financial officers in the metro area, wondering how we could move forward on that. And this council is going to be looking at that scenario again. You know, it should be separated. In a perfect world, if you're in a strata and you've got a, you know, it's great, you've got a two percent tax increase, and I'm not knocking it, you know, everybody likes to have a bit of a bargain in life, or a one percent tax decrease. The cost of RCMP, and I just gave those figures there, you know, it's nine hundred thousand dollars, those costs, whether it's this year or last year or the year before, RCMP costs go up, fire services go up, you know, bylaw services go up. And then, we have all the issues to deal with homelessness, crime task force, homeless task force, and that's something that we've been working on, and Mr. Chung is now on the homeless task force at Metro Vancouver, and I know, just last week, I believe he spent three out of the five days working on that, visiting different programs in downtown Vancouver. So, for this community, protective services is a very expensive cost. And I believe, speaking for council, we'd like to see the province step up, or the feds step up, and do a little bit more. And I know they're going to be looking at, you know, some different scenarios and projects. And I just hope that a little bit more can be done here. You know, it's not just Langley City, but Langley Township or for the Cloverdale area. So, we seem to be the go-to place for a lot of the homeless out there, and how many services as a small community can we offer, or the gateway of hope? So, again, I'd just like to thank you and your staff for doing a great job. Budget time is never easy, and, okay, we'll call the question. All those in favor? It's unanimous four. Thank you, Darren. The annual report for city committees is there in front of you. I need a motion that the annual reports for the following city committees be received, Community Day Committee, Magic of Christmas Day Committee, and Youth Committee. Councillor Storeyboom, councillor Vandenberg. Any questions at all? I just have one pertaining to the Community Day, and I'd just like to thank some of the parties that were involved with this Alder Grove Credit Union, even though they're not in the city, Canadian Tire, the Christian Life Assembly, the Langley Advance, the Langley Lions, and our own paid-on-call firefighters, potters, the Southgate Church, the match eatery over at the casino, Savon Foods, and Savon Foods seems to come across in a positive manner, you know, without, you know, without question. They just, I can't say enough about Savon Foods, they're just a great organization that have been helping us here, and just great sights and sounds, and they organize the entertainment. So, there's just a few, there's probably one or two that I missed. And I'd also like to thank the volunteers that come to these meetings. We held half a dozen or more meetings in the course of the year, and I know there were meetings held, but councillor Albrecht's committee as well, and I'll just turn it over to councillor Albrecht.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, the Magic of Christmas Parade Committee was as vibrant and enthusiastic as always, with the help of my co-chair, councillor Vandenberg, Terry James, Rosemary Wallace, Darwin Ossichuk, Donald Kelly, Lee Castron, Wendy Thomas, Sandy Dunkley, Bobby Hill, Tim Gonzalez, and Tara Edel, a staff member who, without her, it would be impossible to run such an important and valued event in our community. We had involvement from the Langley Youth Council, Clover Towing, the Downtown Business Association, Langley Advance, Langley RCMP, and Southgate Church, so I want to thank all of them. And then, on behalf of councillor Arnold, the Youth Committee, we had a pretty dynamic list of very, very interesting and enthusiastic young people as well. Oh, my goodness, Kendra Yoshizawa, Melissa Krasenek, Eva Carpatty, Devon Laboukhan, Pavind Bandesh, I'm butchering these things, sorry, Jason Thera, Tiara Boland, Jenny Lee, Annika Lee, Jasmine Lee, Thomas Knight, Jack, Kim Hilton, and Michelle Payton. Our staff members are fabulous in making these things work. A number of meetings, and they held the, were involved with the Magic of Christmas Parade, as well as the Youth Week, with all kinds of organizing, and my apologies to my poor pronunciations, I wasn't that prepared, but anyways, I want to thank everyone. Thank you so much.
You did great.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, all those in favor? Against, it's unanimous on receiving. Next item we have is the Hunter Park Redevelopment Task Group, and that council approved the attached terms of reference dated January tenth, two thousand seventeen, for the Hunter Park Redevelopment Task Force group. The purpose of the report is to request council approval to create this task group. And moved by councillor Bahal, seconded by councillor Albrecht. Any kind of discussions at all? Seeing none? Go forth and plant trees, and all those in favor? Yeah, that's what it's about there, taking a look at that park, great. And committee appointments, and the motion that the following committee appointments be made for the period of January first, two thousand seventeen, to December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, and they are Langley Good Times Cruising Committee, councillor Albrecht, Community Day Committee, Sandy Dunkley, Debbie White, Sandy Sai, Lori Dufton, Steve Nicholson, and Peter Curlow, Janet Bennett, Terry James, Colleen Clark, Tanya Gabara, and Lisa Farkinson, and the Magic of Christmas Parade, Darwin Ossichuk, Don Kelly, Lee Castron, Rosemary Wallace, Sandra Pikeley, Sandy Dunkley, Wendy Thomas, Terry James, Tanya Gabara, and Lisa Farkinson again, and that councillor Bahal be appointed to the Hunter Park Development Task Groups for, so, there we go, councillor Martin, and seconded by councillor Vandenberg. I just heard her in the background. And all those in favor? So, welcome aboard, everybody. And correspondence, we have one item here, is that the TNI network be authorized to conduct door-to-door canvassing on behalf of World Vision, the Red Cross, B.C. Children's Hospital, and the World Wildlife Fund, one week per month, with a maximum of three weeks in the calendar year, per organization. A move and a second to councillor Martin, councillor Vandenberg. Councillor Martin?
Thank you. I've discussed door-to-door canvassing several times over the years, in that I'm not sure that the public is aware that people, when they do do door-to-door canvassing, have to have the approval of city council. I know when I get people at my door, I ask them if they have permission, and they, oh, yeah, yeah, and I say, let me see your letter. Well, it's back at the office, and there's all kinds of excuses, or they say they don't need permission. And then, once I say, well, you know, I know you do, I'm on city council, and we have to approve it, they sort of change their tune. And what I try to do is get a business card and let Mr. Chung know, so he can contact companies. And I mention this because there are so many scams going on today, not just on the internet, but people come right to your doors. So, I'm wondering if maybe perhaps in one of our newsletters that we could mention in regards to door-to-door canvassing, that people can request to see the letter of approval from the city before they give any money, because it's only protecting themselves. And, you know, a lot of times, the stories are really good stories that you hear at the door, but you don't know how authentic they are unless they have been approved by city council. So, I just mentioned that, I would appreciate it, and I think in the end, the public would, so they know that they're not being scammed. Thank you.
Yep. So, anything else on that? All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous four. There was a move and a second, there wasn't, Paul? Yeah. Okay, anything else under new business? Seeing none, I need a motion to adjourn. Councillor Storeyboom, councillor Vandenberg, all those in favor? It's unanimous four.
I have to hear.
Yeah, welcome back.